So welcome everybody to the study sessions. My last study session for 10 years. And tonight we are welcoming our friends from Providence. It looks to be a very interesting conversation, so I'll pretty much just let you guys do it.
And Nicole told us we're all speaking towards this line.
Just forward me, right? All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us today. My name is Victor Carrasco. I'm the chief executive here for Promise Milwaukee Hospital, which is 200 miles from here. The best place to come for a meeting is when it's only five minutes away, so I appreciate that. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about our hospital and what it means to our community and how we integrate, not only with other places within Providence, but we have two very specific programs that we want to highlight today that benefit our community greatly. With me today, I have Joan Corella, who is a partner development specialist for Providence Elder Place will be part of our our conversation today, and also Dr. Dr. Osborne, who is the program director for the Oregon family, Providence Oregon Family Medicine Residency, which he's back back there and also will be part of this conversation. So, you know, Providence, Milwaukee has been around for a while. We were founded actually in 1968 by the Dwyer family, which is a local family. And you may or may not know Bob Dwyer Jr., who was one of the founding members of this family, just recently passed away. He was a a great ally, a great voice for our organization and our hospital in this community. He passed actually, I believe, earlier in November. Providence integrated with the Dwyer Memorial Hospital back in 1986. We were one of, I think, four or five bidders and we were able to forge that specific alliance since then. And we've had a great legacy and we'll continue to have that for many, many years. Some of the items that you'll hear today are part of what that legacy looks like now as well as what's in our future. We are one of the smallest hospitals within Providence, but small doesn't mean that we're not mighty. We serve a lot of patients and we'll get into those statistics here shortly. We're part of the eight hospitals that Providence has in in Oregon. And two of them are in Tacumus County, which one sits here. We currently employ about 684 employees that are both from the community as well as from surrounding areas. We participate in in our mission every single day, which is to ensure that we can reach out and serve our poor and our vulnerable in our community. With that, we invest about $29.1 million to improve community health. That's targeted investments of about 1.9 million in community health services or free and low cost care. In 2021, that was about $3.6 million. So that's an incredible amount of free or again, low cost care on today's examples as part of that investment that we will see. We also have a incredible service called the Community Teaching Kitchen. It is very few, the only one in Oregon, as as big as it is. And Dr. Osborne will actually get into that a little bit, but it is an incredible program, which we use food as medicine. And it's working on many, many initiatives as well as a giving garden, which is a community garden as part of our programs and services. In Oregon, there's about a, in Oregon overall, many, many patients have a food insecurity and specifically it's about 17% overall for Oregon. And then in in our clinic, specifically in the Milwaukee clinic population, specifically those with young children, it's about 42% insecurity. So that is definitely an issue for us that this community kitchen does address. Even though we're a small facility, we're again a 77 bed facility in this community. We belong to what we call a hub and spoke model, which essentially the patients that come into our emergency department, because we don't have neurosurgery, for example, onsite, we don't have dialysis, for example, in in our community or in our hospital. We transfer those patients to what we call through a higher level of care process. And essentially they go and get, you know, those higher level of care services. For the most part, many of our patients come to our ED and we're able to take care of them. The traditional hospital services that we have includes surgery, medical inpatient care, outpatient services, which includes diagnostic and laboratory services. We have very, very busy ED and I'll give you some very quick statistics. In 2020, we had about 25,000 visits annually. And in 2021, that climbed to 26,643. And this year, we're on track to hit about 28,000 visits. So that's almost a 2,000 visit increase from in a two-year period. Today, we are going through a surge of patients. It's an active surge that's occurring, mostly flu patients and RSV as well as COVID. The good news with that is that the majority of the patients that we're seeing, you know, are not staying very, very long. We're moving them along. The the problem is is the amount of patients that are coming in. For example, yesterday, in a about a two-hour period, we had about 45 patients in our ED, which is a lot. Typically, in a 24-hour period, we see anywhere from 80 to 90 patients. And to see half of that volume in a very small amount of time overwhelms our emergency department. You know, our caregivers are part of this community too. They have kids and they they get sick. And so when they get sick, it affects us. Last week, Providence as a whole, the hospitals, we did declare a to go into crisis standards of care, which is essentially the ability to look at our resources, not triage the patients, but but to ensure that the resources that we have can be maximized. Tonight, we did announce our own hospital that we may be coming in and out just based on, again, the sick calls that we're getting and the resources that we have and whether we're being overwhelmed in the emergency department like last.
That's a good question. So you have a rough idea of the percentage of visits to the ED? That were people able to access regular preventative care, they would not be there. I know I asked that in kind of a confusing way. Did it land?
So so are you asking whether?
This leader of Milwaukee, you're shut. We're shut to patients and that capacity is affects our ability to see folks, see acute folks. We could expand and hire two or three more primary care docs when we don't have space. And the man is there. First, we need to see that. So I think two patients in the life of it. And if we can't get people in and just jams up the ER. So I think we are part of the solution, but I think primary care is always
Right. Where I was trying to get at was move more folks that are really badly underinsured, really don't have any insurance at all. Are low, go to the doctor until it becomes an emergency.
So they use the ED as a primary care office.
That's where they end up.
Right.
Because what's wrong with them? It's so cute that they don't have a choice.
We, you know, we would have to specifically look at that. I don't know if we track it or not, but that's a great question. What we do see and what we do track is what we call the left without being seen. Patients that come to the ED, right, every day or every day. But they leave because the wait time is too too long, right? That we do have that. We were averaging about maybe a 3% to 4% rate, which is not the best, but it's pretty good. And now we're seeing anywhere from 6% to 7%. That's a tremendous increase. A lot of the times is you have to think about all the other community hospitals around us, right? And they're also under the same pressures that we are volume staffing. And so patients go to one ED and they wait, they go to the other ED. So those those points of of patients not being seen as part of that. And, you know, sometimes our wait time is can be three hours. Sometimes it could be 30 minutes, just depending on when, what, what part of the day you go. And the the issue, whether we're getting patients that have a primary care, you know, provider or underinsured or uninsured, we do see that statistic. Typically, whether they choose to go at the last minute or not, but our underinsured and uninsured rate is pretty low. It's less than 10%. So it's pretty good. But we, even if you have a PCP and if you don't go see that PCP, you know, at all, then you're going to end up in the ED, right? So it's it's more about the behavior of the individual and their relationship with that PCP or to Dr. Osborne's point, is there availability? You know, there's patients, if you're a new patient to a new practice, you're going to shop around for a PCP. Like for us, we aren't able to fulfill that. So we refer that out to another primary care group. They may have an appointment, you know, two months down the line, right? Or a month down the line, if it's a routine type of care appointment. So it's it's that resource is is that demand is there to Dr. Osborne's point, but the the access is just not there. We just cannot hire folks fast enough to fulfill that need and space is the other issue as well. So. Good question. So in the month of October, November this year, out of our small hospital, again, referring back to the hub and spoke model, we transfer about 94 patients. That means 94 patients that came into our hospital to get care, we were able to stabilize them and transfer them out to a higher level of care, which is great. That means that individual didn't have to drive out. We were able to transport them through a through an ambulance process, which was great. In about 30 days. And then we have quite a few green initiatives that we'll talk about as well in our presentation today, which is another part of who we are. So here's a challenge that that we see that we were talking about earlier about staffing. Right now, that is our number one challenge. You know, during the pandemic, there were schools closed down, right? And and we don't even have enough instructors out in these schools. So is this idea of ensuring that we have the right infrastructure ready for us to bring on the new generation of healthcare workers? We're seeing a lot of healthcare workers leave the profession as well, early retirements, burnout, burnout is huge right now. It's one of our biggest concerns. And there's this interdependence between labor shortages, hospital capacity, limitations, reimbursement, and of course, the healthcare financial challenges that we have, whether it's something that's covered, something that's not covered, whether it's reduced or not reduced, whether we have an extension of Medicaid or not, it's it's a huge challenge. So 25% reduction in staffing since the pandemic began in 2020. So essentially, two out of our 10 caregivers either retired or left. And of course, like I stated earlier, early retirements, 55% of nurses that are age 50 or plus, they do expect to retire within the next five years. And this includes our physicians as well. You know, we're very lucky to have a residency program. And and Dr. Osborne will talk a little bit about how important and why it's important to have that here. And I do have to say that it's very unique for a community hospital this size to have a program like that and how unique that is and how lucky we are to have them.
That 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 may be standard or feel like folks are wanting to retire earlier than they would have stayed 10, 12 years.
That's it. They're they're choosing early retirement and you would think, you know, with the way that economy is and sort of the some retirement bonds, you would think that they would not. We we started seeing that at the end of 2021, a lot of people just saying, you know what, I think it's time for me to retire. And it's unfortunate because they literally leave the entire profession. You know, in the past, when you were a nurse or a physician that wanted to perhaps slow down, you would slow down, but then you would take on a teaching position or you would take some type of instructor position. We're not seeing that now. So that adds more to our throughput in our in our technical schools, for example, in nursing schools as well. So what are we doing really to address some of these issues? We're working a lot with our our caregivers and our talent acquisition in bonus strategies and bonus opportunities, whether it's by position or recruitment efforts. I'll give you an example. We had a great partnership with a community orthopedic group here in our community to be able to help them recruit another orthopedist physician to our community. That's part of our investment strategy and part of our retention strategy. Because again, this provider that we're bringing on will allow us to retain patients in our community instead of having to go somewhere else, which is very important to us. You know, when you're able to visit your family in your local hospital, again, a mile and a half from here versus six, seven miles going through traffic to downtown Portland, it's much better for our patients' experience as well as our family. Sure.
Would they provide it? Practice? Then the financial PBA?
That's correct. Yes. Again, it's it's extremely important to us. You know, it's a specialty orthopedics. I hope never everybody has that opportunity to experience that, but it's a it's an important specialty for us and for our community. And culture and mission, we we believe in culture and mission as a driver of of retention. Everything from tonight, for example, we had our holiday meal, which we served our our caregivers, the holiday meal for the holiday, a lot of engagement opportunity. We take engagement surveys to understand what the you know, what the temperature of of the caregivers are and what opportunities do we have to ensure that we can meet the needs that they that they have. Core salaries are another issue that we have, wage scales. Inflation has pushed those scales up tremendously, trying to keep up with that and be competitive, not only with the local community businesses, right? But also internally with our own organization and externally to our competitors. So it's a it's a it's a balance that we're continuously looking at. And of course, you know, growing our own, this is a part of our culture of who we are. We offer scholarships. We have tuition assistance. We also do a lot of flexible schedules for our our nurses. Or for example, we have an individual right now who works in our access services department. And she's studying to be a medical oncology tech and eventually wants to be a physician and oncologist. So, you know, that traction and that career path is very important to us because we want to grow our own. We want to support that individual to ensure that, you know, she she becomes and she lives here local, by the way, five minutes from the hospital, which is great.
I have a question. So I actually managed a grant for Grow Your Own for teachers. And there's a school district in Prince George's County. And maybe three or four years ago, they have a cohort of nursing students. They identify them as freshmen in high school. And by the time they graduate, they graduate with an AOT and then move on to nursing school to finish up their schooling. Have you all thought about that? Like connecting with a high school and starting basically like up in apprenticeship program or residency program? Because the way you're going to get folks, just like in teaching, you got to get them when they're still in school and you got to make it so when they leave high school, it's less money that they're spending to finish their school.
So that's a great segue and I did not pay dosage, so we know. The new role, the patient care tech, is exactly designed for that. We want to be able to take somebody that doesn't know anything about healthcare, that doesn't have, you know, a lot of training, that perhaps just graduated high school or is about to graduate high school and put him in a role like this, give him the right orientation and onboarding and start him in a career in healthcare. That's a new role that we're just trialing out. This individual can do things like vital signs, you know, sit with patients if they're agitated, help them with, you know, perhaps going to the bathroom, things like that, very simple tasks. But we believe that it's the the way that they need to enter. Getting into healthcare can be very cumbersome, can be very difficult to get into. So designing roles like this at our entry level allows us in that path. And part of our talent acquisition strategy is exactly what you just talked about, which is reaching out to to the high schools with the counseling services to ensure do we have opportunity there that we can actually be able to be present, you know, through career fairs or or programs? Because that's the only way we're going to get out of this, you know, this slump that we have. And it's going to be a while. It'll it's going to take a while to get out of it, you know? Right now, with 20% shortage, it's going to take some time. To train somebody takes a long, long time. I'm sure teachers does the same way, as you may know. So another challenge that we have, which is a very unique to Oregon, I I came from California myself. And and one thing I learned that was very surprising to me was this statistic here. We are the least betted state in the nation, meaning that we don't have enough beds for the demand that we were talking about. We simply do not. That was a huge surprise to me because I'm not used to running a hospital at 90, 99% capacity, right? Meaning that I have more patients in the hospital than I have beds. Like that's, I mean, I can see that maybe in two weeks, but month after month after month, that's that's a little bit too much. And you see this across our own Providence hospitals that we're running at a very, very high capacity. You know, there are states, for example, that tell you as part of your emergency operations plans, you need to reserve, you know, 20% for emergencies, like the wildfires that we've had, things like that. Here, we simply don't have the ability to do so. Sometimes I don't know if, I think Oregon is a certificate of need state, which basically says that in order to build another hospital, you have to have a certificate of need through the state. In other words, and you know, and who controls that certificate of need process, that that part I don't know. But I can tell you that this was a statistic that was surprising to me. So what, how do we solve that? But we're a big believer that, you know, that's a problem. We got to, you know, face it head on. A good way to do that is to work with our our providers, with our nurses, with our post-acute care providers, with all the individuals that make up that 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 continuum of care and say, how can we be more efficient? How can the hospital help you to be more efficient? Do we subsidize things? Do we work with you? What does that look like? For example, the state gave out a a specific funds for some skilled nursing facilities to be able to help them with their staffing because they were struggling with staffing. So they give them a specific grant to be able to say, all right, well, we take this patient, you know, and you're able to help reduce the length of stay or the amount of time the patients stay sit in a hospital. And you'll be able to receive that grant as a result of that throughput. That hasn't really worked because there's not enough staff out there, so the funds are just sitting there. So it goes back to that previous side of staffing. Next slide, please. So again, creative service growth is how do we do with, even though we have capacity issues, what do we do? We're repurposing inpatient care space, for example. If you do go to our ED and we're fully, we're full, you may be seeing out in the hallway right now. Or you may be seeing it in a unit that we have not been using. Last night, for example, with those 40 patients, we had to expand into what we call a search space. Took a bunch of patients and moved them to a temporary space. Today, we have some discharges. We're able to move those patients, close that space down and use it again for another search. That's probably going to occur either within the next 24 hours or 48 hours. We also have a program called our direct access colonoscopy clinic. That's specifically for patients that are low risk, go through a screening process, are referred to a physician to get that. That's also here in our community. We see quite a few patients. Typical three to four times per week, anywhere from 10 to 15, 20 patients per day. So it's rapid throughput as well, very, very well ran. We also have primary care services with Dr. Osborne, we'll talk about today. And service expansion such as, we also have a dental clinic and we have a partnership with an FQHC in our in our in our campus and quite a few other services. We're very specific in having a anticoagulation lab. That's that's very unique to us, very unique to this community. And a a senior psych unit, a geriatric locked unit. That's very, very rare. It's the only one in Oregon and it's here in your community. So you should feel very proud that geriatric patients that may need that service, their families that are here local will stay local. So that's it. That service is about 19 beds. And it's full all the time. We rarely have any openings.
Ask you about the colonoscopy? Is it something I've experienced? So I used to have to go to Oregon Clinic than the last time go in Milwaukee, which was very convenient, but you know, it wasn't a hardship for me to go to Oregon Clinic either. Do you find that by having it here, you get more people to do it? I mean, do you find a higher percentage of people will do it because it's closer to home or it's easier? So what's the public health benefit of having that?
Sure. So, you know, we also have our own plan, our province health plan, right? So primarily, part of the access to care is when we build something like that is for the community, not just for for one plan. But we're seeing as a compliance, meaning how many patients actually say, yes, I'll schedule an appointment. I'll keep you. It's pretty high. It's about 90, 98%. So it's it's really high. The convenience is important. Sometimes we see barriers to transportation. Or, you know, people can't take time off, right? So they're going to drop off their loved one, go back to do whatever they got to do, come back and pick them up. So we we see that as well. We do schedule and work with our patients, but they do need transportation. We help them with that as well. So it is very coordinated in that sense. The compliance is quite high and the satisfaction is quite high. We do measure that satisfaction as well. Well, were you satisfied or not satisfied with service? And it's it's very well received. And more importantly, it's a it's a preventative, you know, tool that our physicians use, the care of their patients. So, good question. So another item that we're very proud of is our environmental stewardship. This is a a Providence-wide initiative, but something that we took on quite well in 2022. This year, actually, in the fall, we received the Practice Green Health Emerald Award. This award is only awarded to 20% of top hospitals in the nation. And one initiative we took on this year was also reducing emissions in our anesthesia, something that many folks don't think about. But that program was implemented and we reduced emissions by about 92.3%. Otherwise, they would go into our own environment or add into the exhaust. And then, of course, causes seven emissions categories that comprise the ISP match with things like natural gas, anesthesia, nitrous oxide, waste disposal, things like that. We reduced our emissions by about 14.74% from our baseline year, which was 2019. And our goal is 10% because that's the outstanding goal. So we've got some room to to grow. And then in '21, 52%, at 52%, Milwaukee was the only hospital in Providence to achieve the goal of keeping less than 50% or excuse me, more than 50% of hospital waste out of landfill or incinerator. Again, our teaching kitchen is also putting, no, excuse me, our cafeteria kitchen is not tracking the waste that we, the food waste that we have. We want to reduce that through either partnerships with food pantries or how can we repurpose that even within our own food pantry in the in the teaching kitchen? And then we enrolled in the Cool Food Pledge to assess, manage, reduce the carbon intensity of meals served as well as address both upstream and downstream food waste. Again, part of our initiatives that we talked about. So with that, if there are no questions, give it a moment. I'd like to transition out to Joan Corella, who's going to talk to us about Elder Place.
I have to tell you, I'm so excited to share this information with you. When they reached out to me, I realized that, you know, it's such an opportunity for us to share this program that exists here in Milwaukee. So Providence Elder Place is a PACE program and we have a site here in Milwaukee. It's at the building in the Healing Place on campus. Actually, I remember when you toured it, when it first opened. Yeah. And so just to give you a little bit of background of what this program is, it's a PACE program. It's a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly. It is a relationship between It is a relationship between Providence, Medicare and our state Medicaid system. So we provide care and support to individuals who are on Medicaid long-term care, long-term services. So our population is, um, low income. They are individuals who need care every day. So, um, in the state of Oregon, that means that you can be considered nursing home level of care. But in our state, the goal is for people to be able to stay in their own home or in a home of their choice, which can also include assisted livings, adult care homes and other community-based care. So Providence has been in this agreement for thirty years. So we were one of the first, uh, pilot programs in the country. And, um, we've been in, where we're in Multnomah County. And then about six years ago, we were able to come into Clackamas County. And then, um, specifically, our site is here in Milwaukee. So, um, what it is, is a wraparound care. So someone who is a participant in our program receives all of their medical care from us, all of their, um, anything that Medicare would cover, so anyone who's sort of in that realm. And then also anything that Medicaid covers. So for long-term services, Medicaid covers your direct care. So it's in-home care, if someone's living in their home, it covers the cost of someone living in an adult care home. It covers transportation, dental, vision, hearing, all your prescriptions, supplies. All of those things are covered in the PACE program. So once someone's in the program, all of that's wrapped around, wrapped around. And it's completely covered by the cost, uh, uh, per month, per member per month amount from Medicaid. This is a program that the state really has, um, felt very strongly about and has been promoting. Um, like I said, it's been thirty years since we've been here. Um, there's now, the state has actually, um, have other programs starting across the state as well. Um, for the state of Oregon, um, in general, it's about ten to fifteen percent less to cost to the state for individually cared for this program. And at the same time, it's considered by many a gold standard of care because we truly care for the whole person throughout the whole, um, the ti- their time with us. So a couple of things that go on with PACE, um, we have, going back to that emergency room question, right? So we have a very low emergency room utilization. For the population that we serve, we see less than one of our members per year going to the emergency room. One, one visit per year per member. Um, hospital readmission, that's another big challenge. So for a lot of individuals, they may leave the hospital and then returning to the hospital is a significant challenge. People who are in our PACE program, our PACE program, um, are thirty-five percent less likely to return to the hospital and have a readmission. Um, we also support families and caregivers. So many of us have had that opportunity to be a caregiver in our family. And you know that it can cause tremendous amount of stress, burnout for caregivers. It's a significant issue in our communities today. And this program provides extra support for those families. I'm sorry.
Does that include families that are dealing with folks that are suffering Alzheimer's?
Yep, um, yes. So about sixty-eight, sixty-eight percent of our participants have a dementia diagnosis. So not all Alzheimer's, um, but yes, we provide a significant amount of support for families and individuals with Alzheimer's. Um, it's a whole team approach. Um, we do get high level of patient satisfaction. We do ongoing surveys with our patients and families. The other thing that I think is really important is everybody on our care team is wholly focused on geriatric care. So when we have that relationship with a patient, we have a relationship, um, with most of the individuals who come into our program. Our requirement is fifty-five and older, our average age is seventy-nine. Most people are in our program through end of life with us. And for many of the, these individuals, that's about two to three and a half years in, from the time that they join us. During that time, we have this whole team and really identifying what their goals of care are, what's important to them. So it's a very unique program and that we're able to have that whole person approach within the, um, program. And then, um, we definitely, we're serving low-income seniors. Um, but the other piece of that is we have an adult day program. And so, um, through the pandemic, we've had somewhat, some limitations put on that, um, because of how many people we can have in the rooms. That being said, social is still part of this program. It's a health social program and we believe strongly that someone's social connections are an important part of that individual and their needs and their health. And so throughout the, um, pandemic and as we continue, um, we still have social engagement for individuals, even if we can't bring them into our center for that. This is just a visual of it, um, and I just think it's helpful to see kind of everyone on that left-hand side is part of the program. They're physically at our Milwaukee site, um, and they're serving the individuals who are our participants. A couple of things that people are sometimes surprised at. Um, we do our own transportation, so every medical appointment, we're able to provide transportation. Our bus and van drivers are part of our interdisciplinary, our medical interdisciplinary team. They are part of that conversation. Anyone know why they're part of that conversation?
They could experience having to use while they're driving.
Yeah, they are the first, they are the first point of contact in it when they go to a home. They'll observe things that no one else will see. Um, we do provide medical care in the home, so we do have people going out to the homes on a regular basis, but it's our bus and van drivers that see everything. The other thing that I think is really important is when we bring someone to an appointment that's outside of our clinic, um, we bring them all the way to the appointment. So we don't have people sitting and waiting in waiting rooms. We're going to be there for them and make sure they're, um, cared for going into that appointment and coming out of that appointment. Um, we also have a number of people who are in their own homes. And so we have home care coordinators, so someone doesn't have to manage that on their own. Um, and then we also work closely with a lot of other community-based care. I wanted to share this, um, because I think kind of that human side of how people are really touched by this program. Mayor Gama, you asked that question of using utilization of the emergency room. So I think this individual is a really good example. So he was living at home with his wife and they were living with their daughter. He had a number of medical issues, she was the primary, the wife was the primary person who was supporting him and taking care of him. Got him to doctor's appointments, took care of things. She died unexpectedly. He now was home with his daughter. His daughter had a job where she worked four days a week, ten-hour days. A job that she could not leave periodically to take her dad to a doctor's appointment, get on the phone to try to get a prescription filled, couldn't do all that management. What ended up happening was if they couldn't make an appointment that was on a Monday, they didn't go to the doctor that week. If they didn't go to a doctor that week and his medical condition was something that needed to be addressed, she'd come home at eight o'clock, she would take him to the emergency room. They were in the emergency room, our emergency room, twelve times in about a year and a half. Nine of those times, he was admitted to the hospital. So someone who's elderly being admitted to the hospital can have a significant trauma and some long-term effects on their health. It was a situation where he had been to the hospital and when he came out that he was given home health, he had a Providence Home Health Team that was supporting him. And it was the home health team who said to him, have you ever heard of PACE? Elder Place is, could be an option for you. So he ended up enrolling in Elder Place. And at the time, he was still living with his daughter. His daughter, um, they had in-home care providers, we found them in-home care providers. We got that set up, our team started working with him. The chronic medical condition that he had was addressed by a geriatric-focused provider that was able to address that and bring it to some resolution for him. So he wasn't having that constant need. Hasn't gone to the emergency room in the past two years that he's been with us once. But the other thing that happened, and I think this is important, is that the daughter really still felt she couldn't handle it. She still felt overwhelmed and we had in-home caregivers. We were getting his supplies to him, we were getting his prescriptions. But still, she was just so stressed out. So she talked to our social workers about it. And that's when the idea of going to an adult care home came up. They had never even heard of adult care homes. They didn't really know that that was an option for them. So if you're not aware, you have about ninety of them in Milwaukee. Um, five people in a home, it's an incredibly wonderful ability place for people to be cared for. So he was resistant because he's like, I want to stay in my home. I have my routine, I have things going on. The daughter was still concerned, so they started working with our social worker. And what we discovered was the reason he didn't want to move out was not so much his home, but he loves his schedule. And he had worked retail his entire life. He wanted to have breakfast at ten o'clock and dinner at eight. And he thought that if he went anywhere, they would make him, force him to have breakfast at eight o'clock in the morning. Apparently he's never woken up at eight o'clock in the morning, didn't like that idea at all. Yeah, a lot of us are with him on that. So, um, so our social workers work with all these different adult care homes and we found one that said, if he wants breakfast at ten o'clock, we can have breakfast at ten o'clock. So that was one of those things where without the support of the PACE program, if he had been on straight Medicaid, to have someone who could really find out what the issue was, what the concern was, meet the whole person and his needs, that was significant. Um, and they, they had to use the emergency room. They didn't have a choice in their mind, I mean, not in their mind, that the reality was if you work four days a week and they're ten-hour days, if you need a doctor's appointment, it wasn't anything that would, so she would end up going late at night. That was their routine. Um, so the Providence, Milwaukee site specifically, um, we serve over three hundred participants out of this site. The whole program in, for, um, Providence serves over seventeen hundred people, but three hundred are out of this site. We have sixty caregivers within our site providing that care. Um, we are the second largest of all the, uh, Providence Elder Place sites in, um, and then this particular site is also the fastest-growing site. Um, we, we could definitely, if we had more space, we could just keep going. It's been incredibly well-received and we work very closely with the Medicaid program here. Um, we contract with adult foster homes, um, assisted living, skilled nursing throughout the community. Um, again, the daughter in this particular case was able to, to maintain her employment. That is not an uncommon situation. When PACE is there, family members are able to continue their employment in their community as well. Um, supporting people living in their own homes by having a PACE program here in Milwaukee, we've been able to have people who are able to stay in the community that they're choosing, that they want to be in. And then, um, I mentioned that we provide all the medical transportation and then also care in the home. So we provide, we have, um, nurses, our physicians go into the home as needed or people come into our clinic, or we do virtual visits. So, you know, in the past two years, a lot of people have missed appointments, have not been able to get into their providers. Um, the individuals who are in the PACE program, we see all of our patients on a very regular basis because we're the ones who are setting up all those appointments. And if they can't come to us, we can go to them. So that's what I have. Am I handing it? Yep. So thank you. Any questions about the program or?
Oh, thanks. But I guess the big, basic one that came up for me was, what, you, you said if they just had basic Medicare, they wouldn't have this successful life that they're having. What's the app, what, what's the ad, where does it come?
So, um, specifically Medicaid. So, um, so Medicaid is determined on physical need and financial need for long-term services. And what's added to this, um, is really that, um, high, high level of care management and the fact that we're responsible for that whole person. So when there is a, a concern or issue or medical concern, it's not just a physician, it's a physician, a nurse, a social worker, a rehab team. Everybody's looking at it together. Um, and I think the other piece of it, the significant, is that we focus very strongly on the individual's goals of care. What's important to them.
I got all that.
Yeah.
What I'm asking about is structurally, where does the money come to all of that care?
Yeah, where does money come from? I can tell you exactly where it comes from. So we get a, um, specific amount from Medicaid. They give us a, um, per member per month amount. Um, the way that that's calculated is they look at what the average cost of a, uh, similar patient or for them, client would be, and then they knock a few percentages off of that. That's what we get paid. The other amount comes from Medicare. So we get a per member per month amount from Medicare that those funds are pooled and then it's our responsibility to manage that. Um, we're regulated through the Centers for Medicaid, Medicare. And so, um, all of that care is being heavily regulated through Medicaid and Medicare.
So aside from the aforementioned staffing issues, what, what keeps us as a state from upscaling that system so that every?
Every place in, well?
Person that needs that care.
Yeah. So there's, there's an RFP out from the state. Um, if it hasn't gone out, it's going out very soon, um, to, to upscale it. Um, there's a program down in Medford now that they just started. One of the biggest challenges is, it's a pretty hefty investment from the sponsoring organization. So Providence has been strongly committed to this for many years. Uh, as I said, we were one of the first ones in the, um, among, among the first ones in the country. And, um, and it's, it's a big commitment. Um, but there are other organizations looking at it right now, um, and the state is trying to expand it. Yeah, definitely.
So for like the story you just spoke about, how many families qualify in these services? I don't know. Uh, that they qualify and certain programs.
Yeah. You know, I think there is, um, probably some ways that we can get that information out. So individuals who are accessing Medicaid long-term services, um, are the ones who can definitely, you know, qualify for it. There are also individuals that if you're a caregiver or you're the individual, you're overwhelmed. So just getting, you know, you're not searching around, you're not looking for stuff, you're not going to events. I mean, that's, you're just surviving. And so I think the ways to get information out is any, any type of, you know, newsletter. We work with Meals on Wheels to get it out in their newsletters. We work with the, um, senior centers to get information out to people in the community. Churches are another really good way because they often have someone who might be doing home visits. Um, so as far as how to help in doing that, um, you know, the more access we can have to get information about the program out is really appreciated. Um, you know, if I'm walking in here, I'm thinking the library is also another really good place to get information out. Um, but absolutely, people who need it or sometimes have the toughest time to do it.
So can people, I mean, it sounds like, like your example, the gentleman you identified through his emergency, right? Sounds like sometimes doctors are referring, but can people apply directly?
Yep, anybody can refer to us, um, anybody can, can do that. And then I think the other thing that I would say is that we work closely within the hospital. Um, so it was a Providence Home Health person. Um, we also work with the other health systems. So we work with, you know, all the other offices, the primary care offices in our area. Um, and anybody can refer, but we also work, work with social service organizations um, and other community groups. And like I said, anybody can refer to us.
And you make sure that it's equitable, that everybody, black, white, brown, is getting services?
Um, that's a great question. It's also a big. It's also a big focus for us right now. And I think it's something that we can do better. But one of the things that we do is we do have a, a very specific grant to do outreach within the BIPOC community right now. This weekend, I got to spend my weekend at one of those events that we provided at Covenant Church up in Multnomah County. And we're doing a lot more outreach around the BIPOC community. We hired a number of individuals and what, that's actually been a big piece of it is our own hiring. We strongly felt that one of our challenges was that, you know, we all want to be, you know, you, we want to be treated by people like me, right?
It's just like teaching, kids want to see a teacher that looks like them. People want to be treated by people that look like them. Because, you know, we all know, like, black women tend not to get pain medication.
Yep.
Because they can become addicts, but yeah, white women will get pain medication. Not dished out, but you know what I mean?
Well, another piece of that is we've really worked to expand our in-home so people can live in their own homes. And one of the things that's a, a ongoing challenge is within the BIPOC community, there's a very high level of discomfort to moving into assisted living in different communities. So that's been a big piece of it. The adult care homes actually have a much more diverse group of ownership. And that I think is a really important piece for us. And that for us, again, though, it's, it's who we, who are our caregivers too. We need to really make sure that we have, we hire in a way that we bring people from across our community. Yeah, good point. Thank you.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to talk. I'm Justin Alveron, the Program Director, Providence's Family Medicine Residency. I came down in twenty sixteen from University of Washington, spent twenty-eight years up there, various roles. They'll build out clinics in the community. My dream was to, like, train in that community. Trained in Virginia for med school and came out here. And speaking of diversity, I think we're part of the solution of attracting folks. And if there is a silver lining in recruiting people virtually, that's it. And I think we're working hard on it. We just watched a movie called Aftershock and if you haven't seen it, I strongly recommend it. It's about mortality in African-American women. And it's shocking in this country. We're really a third or fourth world nation in some ways. So we're trying to address that. And if every single one of our grads in all the family medicine programs in Oregon State would be still fifty percent short. Some of it's folks like me that are draining, going to retire, but it's also expansion and growth. And so how do we address that need? And this is part of the solution and you're really lucky, you know? We sit between two big hospitals, like five miles apart, and you could have to drive there to get care, but you can come to Milwaukee. And Bob Dwyer donated this. I met and talked to him when he's on the foundation of the, or junior, and a funny guy and really dedicated. And when I came down to interview, there were two reasons I came down. One was I liked the people, I liked the community. And, and number two was mission, that we're here to really help everyone. And I think that Providence, Milwaukee really tries to deliver on that and we try to be integrated. And I, I think of the support that this community grants this. And on our foundation, we get support for a kitchen from Bob's Red Mill, Dave's Co., Bread, you know, some foods. It, it's, it's like everybody kind of gathers up, Car Course Comics, you know? It's like everybody's trying to leave, be part of this. And I really appreciate that and I think Victor's leadership on, on trying to be green and sustain, that's really our future. But let's go to the next slide and I'll talk more. And so we're on the second floor here. We have two clinics, we care for fourteen thousand people. It, it's busy. Like I said, we could expand easily. When I look at the demographics, when I came in twenty sixteen, the Milwaukee clinic tended to be a little older. When I compare it to our Southeast clinic, they look almost identical. And I think the light rail coming in, it's like taxes are cheaper. It's a lot more affordable to live down here, families are moving in. I can't tell the difference demographically between the two. And I think it's going to continue to grow. And I keep thinking, if you connect those light rail lines, this is just going to boom. So we attract people. We, we have over seven hundred and fifty applicants each year for seven physicians. And I'll tell you what drives people and inspires me as a leader is they come for the community, they want to give back to the community. It's not enough to be a doc behind these walls. Traditionally, it's one-on-one. We're teams, we're integrated and we care about the community. And Providence did some amazing things and continues to. Every three years, they have to assess the needs of the community. So when I was in Seattle, we moved our clinic up to North Gate and I was like, helped build out a couple of clinics. I'm like, let's put a stove in so we can teach cooking. Got mixed and I come down here to interview and they have this amazing, like, TV-like cooking kitchen. And you can come in and get classes and learn how to cook. You get given ingredients, dry ingredients, it used to be for ten bucks, I don't know if it's gone up in time. Ten bucks to cook a healthy meal for four. You eat it together, you get the same dry ingredients, you go home and cook it. And the thing that came out of that, that I heard from patients that we referred in was the sense of community, that somebody took the time to help. And there's this whole turn in medicine now called lifestyle medicine. We laugh because family medicine, we've always been like, like it's how do you make yourself healthier? And the other thing that we do in family medicine, I think we do incredibly well here, is we have integrated behavioral health. And you think about it and the data coming in says, like, when people struggle, whether it's addiction or falling off their diabetes meds or whatever, the barriers they face, if you can find those and address them, you can help them on their journey. We're not telling anybody what to do, it's their journey, we assist them. And there's some data coming in showing that integrated behavioral health saves about ten to twelve dollars per member per month in Oregon. I mean, it's actual cash dollars that matter and, and besides health. And you ask about ER, the other thing we're seeing right now, jumping a little bit here, but it's, is the Donut Hole in Medicare, diabetic patients, Trulicity, and we have Farm D students and a great Farm D at our hospital. She's Nigerian, she runs a tight ship and trains great people and they work in our clinic. So what's that?
Uchay, Dr. Uchay?
No, 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 it's Devon. But she does a great job and I'll tell you that, like, if, if I'm stressed out and can't get something put together for a patient, hand it off to the Farm D student, they get that, that covered or they find an alternative. You know, I, I think we see a lot of people in the hospital, don't have to be there if they had coverage. When I practiced in Seattle, I had a whole busloads of patients going up to Canada to get cheaper drugs. And, you know, it makes me sad that we live in this great country with all sorts of resources, but the majority of folks don't get all of that. And it could be different. So we're trying to train for that, so. And this is the, the community teaching kitchen. And when I came down, there were like three or four in the country, Harvard, Hopkins, big places in Milwaukee. And I'm like, what the heck? And I go to national conferences and talk about our teaching food kitchen. And then I said, oh, we have a food pharmacy that's part of the Oregon Food Bank. We have a garden that the nurses grow one to two tons of fresh food. And they just, their eyes get bigger. And, and to me, that summarizes Milwaukee, we're the little place that could. While I wasn't here predating twenty sixteen, there was a patient they thought might have Ebola. And we had a, the ward, the south unit was our old OB floor. We moved out of there, I think, twenty thirteen. And so, you know, OHSU could have done it, others could have done it. Milwaukee steps up and says, hey, we have this negative pressure room, we should try that and do it. And they did. And thank goodness it didn't turn out to be Ebola. But they were willing to, to roll up their sleeves and try. And I, I love that attitude. And I find that we attract people with that attitude. And they come for that community, they come for that outreach. They're driven by mission and that inspires. So next slide. Babies, I don't have babies until about three years ago and I got too tired staying up all night doing that. But we're part of Project Nurture. And if you've never heard of this, you, you like to think that opiate use was not a big deal or meth or whatever, but it is. And when we get pregnant women that are using, we can help them. And our medication-assisted therapy with suplexone can make a huge difference. And we've probably had about ninety to a hundred patients now come through and we've seen a seventy-five percent reduction in preterm deliveries. Just, just think of the cost of what it is to have a baby in the NICU. And when I was doing deliveries, I'd watch the social workers, when they found out somebody was on Project Nurture, you could just see them visibly relaxed, like they knew that person was working a program, they had resources. And we don't just dump them off after we deliver them, we take care of them for that next year. We provide reading materials, diapers, any, anything to kind of support the, the mom through the, that first step. And what we find are, you know, more people staying off of drugs. We support people through their relapses, we know that's part of life. We take the approach that Mark Twain said, look, you don't throw habit out the window, you coax it down the stairs, that harm reduction model. And people stick to it. And in our clinic, we have a social worker for these folks. We have somebody who's struggled with drug addiction, who has come through it, that can support them. When somebody says, I'm struggling with this, they go, I know, and they can support them. And talking to Josh Reagan, whose parents were docs here in town. And he said, look, this is hard work that we do, but when I get up in the morning, this is the why. This gives me purpose, I feel like I'm making a difference. And I love that. And yeah. So we also teach, Tanya Page is our medical director at our Milwaukee clinic. She was the medical director for outside in here in Portland for ten years, homeless outreach. Nothing phases her. I'm like, Tanya, how do you deal with this? She's like, I did a mobile van for ten years, Wi-Fi never worked, you know, we're just always kind of they can do, we dive in. Training the, the middle person there is from OHSU students. We take students talking about pipeline, trying to pull people in, trying to get folks that are interested in family medicine exposed to it and train them well. Sebastian came to us from Tufts in Boston and practices out at PMG Plaquemus. Bunch of folks, we've taken over many, so, so let me back up a second. So from two thousand and one, we graduated over a hundred and twenty family medicine doctors. More than ninety percent stay within a hundred miles. And when I get phone calls from Plaquemus, federally qualified health center or Multnomah County or others in the area, they know of the quality of our residents. Several of them are pretty much made up of our residents and they're like, hey, some of your best ones now. So that's kind of fun. And, you know, he could have gone anywhere in the country, could have gone back anywhere. But I think they're, they're motivated by this great place to live and by the community's spirit and engagement. And we've played a role in, you know, they're smiling and I can say we did that maybe once we had PPE and we're feeling a little safer. This is tough work. Robbie grew up up in Bellingham and went to school in Virginia. And we met him in a national conference in Kansas City. He liked what we were talking about and came out to be with us and is probably going to stay here. Same with Rachel, one of our chief residents came from Washington State, probably going to stay in the area. So I think we're trying to address that need for primary care and have some fun along the way, but also provide that, that solid care. And we have six-bed ICU, so I'll back up a second. So I trained at University of Washington, over five hundred and fifty beds. I came down here, I'm like, I wonder what the medicine's going to be like. I'd put these folks any day up against my training. Six-bed open ICU, I mean, not many hospitals have that. My own mother lived eighty miles from the nearest hospital in Virginia. And, you know, to, to get there was, took a day, day and a half. And, you know, folks here can just drive over and get care if we have access, that's part of the catch. So anyway, I think trying to address that care, whether it's ICU or local care. And one of the things that I like about Providence is integrated services. Our social workers are amazing. Our handoffs are good. Like when somebody's getting discharged from the hospital, we can schedule them in our clinic. We know that follow-up and we integrate that. And our behavioral health folks also teach and train and speaking of pipeline, so they train at least this year, they're doing six grad students or post-grad students. We can't bill for that, but we can provide free care. And I came from a place where it might be six months to get somebody in for counseling. And I don't know what you're seeing here, but I can tell you, this, this pandemic has ripped a rift in people's psyche. And we need more of this. And I think if I can say, hey, next week, let's get chance to see somebody, that's unbelievable good care. And, you know, as a family doc, I can tell you, last time I checked, mind and body were still integrated. And I think we've so subspecialized everything that we've moved away from this. I think people desire that continuity, they desire that connection. Some don't and life's busy and you might just want to get in at the right time. But I, I think that knowing the person makes it so much easier to care for them. So next slide. So the summer burger head, Roxanne's up at PMG North. Jimmy came to us from Montreal, stayed in the area. Ben Hauser grew up in Ty Garden, is now at PMG Plaquemus. Daniel Ruig was at Harborview when I was up there, I taught him. He taught me too. I think one of the beauties of being a teacher in family medicine is when they ask you why, you have to look it up, you have to pull it. I think the quality of doc is fire. And when I talk to our hospitals, they're like, we like being here because of residency. And Daniel Ruig grew up in Roseburg. He's actually going to be the president of the Medical Exec Council. One of the kindest, smartest folks I've ever known. And here they're doing the Hood to Coast, so having some fun. Next slide. So past and future, we're at this intersection of like, where are we going? And I try to keep this attitude, although sometimes it's hard, that in the pandemic, when things blow up and things are changing, that crisis is also a time to think, what do we want to look like? Where are we going? And we can do so much better with our care. And I think that outreach into the community and trying to deliver, we were asking about, you know, diversity and coverage and stuff. After that movie in Aftershock, we were talking, we've started incorporating something called Sacred Roots. It's a tool designed to help African-American women and, you know, just trying to support as best we can. And I know, and I'll just call it out, that Oregon's got a racist history that is not pretty. I trained in Virginia, I came to Seattle, this is a different place, but it's evolving. And I have hope for that. I think that I watched one of our faculty, we hired as the National Chair on BEI for Society's Teachers of Family Medicine, hired Holly Hoff Camp, who's from OHSU and has been their Associate Program Director. She could have gone anywhere and she came here. And she came here because community outreach engagement is part of her, who she is. And we share that with our residents. In fact, the two of them are taking on our community outreach. And this, this year we went from one week to three weeks and next year it'll be four weeks of engagement. She comes down and goes to one of the, I don't know where it is today, I haven't joined her, but one of the laundromats provides free laundry for the underhouse.
They run around a different laundry.
Yeah, and she's telling me, let me, comes in and does some care, how do we, how do we engage with that?
That's, that's a good spot for, yeah.
So I'm inspired. I, I think this next generation of folks is really running with this. And my jobs get out of the way and let them be the best people. And it's a great place to do, so thank you. Any questions?
I, I just have to say, I go to my PCP is at the Handic Center. And the care that my family and I get there is far and away the best that I've ever received. I keep worrying that the, my PCP is going to leave because he's so good, like he listens, like he really listens. And the summer I was diagnosed with type two diabetes. And the care and follow-up that came from Providence was amazing. It was just, you know, I went from like forty, almost fifteen, A1C to now I'm wow, six.
Wow.
Right? And like the folks that call and check up on me like once a month, you know, and they ask me, how often do you want? And they follow up every time. I just, it's really the service that I get. And I don't, I don't, I really hate the customer service model. But that's what everybody, you know, that's how it is. But I really feel like they care about, you know, how we're doing. And, you know, especially like after getting diagnosed with diabetes, making sure that I'm okay and if there's anything else I need. So I just want to say thank you. It's really fun about the best, uh, service that I've got.
Thanks for sharing that personal story and I, I, that warms my heart. And we do this out of love. And I think whether you're a teacher or a doctor, that's really the bottom line here. You know, we want to treat you like our brother and if we don't do that, we're not doing our job. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Osborn. And so what's a, what opportunities do we have for our future growth? Growth, growth for us, emergency department growth is important, behavioral health and med needs is another part item that we're looking at for the future. A continued labor shortage. And of course, we're trying to address labor shortage, shortages through technology, using, for example, telehospitalists, telehealthcare, even additional items. For example, we have this new device that we use to look at seizures, for example, in patients. Typically, you would wait for a tech, uh, an individual that would come in and put this thing on you. That takes about four to six hours, depending on the availability. With this device, you know, you can do a preliminary diagnosis within about thirty to forty minutes where the nurse actually does the work versus waiting for the tech. So things like that is how we're addressing some of these labor shortage. And of course, community programming, such as the items that Dr. Osborn touched, touched about and Elder Place as well. And with that, I, I want to acknowledge the City of Milwaukee's Police Department. In twenty, between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we've had a forty percent increase in police response to our hospital. And that's incredibly important for, for this group to know. We are very appreciative of that. They are extremely, extremely good to us. We've seen a lot of, you know, more threatening violent behavior out of folks that come into our ED and they respond and they respond quickly. So I strongly appreciate that, our caregivers appreciate that. We feel very safe when they respond. And we want to pass it on to the chief if we can, please. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd like to thank Renee for making this a work for us. And I'd like to thank the, the council for welcoming us and giving us a soft touch. Yes?
Well, there was a through line, no figures about.
Well, there was a through line, no figures about being out of space. Is there any thought of expanding, building additional space?
So we are in the process, we have some projects that are planned in our own campus. In this moment in time, we have paused that. There's a lot of issues around capital for Providence at this time. Doesn't mean that we've, you know, eliminated that possibility, but there is opportunity. There is some housing that we're working on. That's two specific projects. But right now, there's some capital constraints. I'm sure you've seen in the news, healthcare's been humbled when it comes to cost. Most of that is in things like travelers or ensuring that we bring nurses from out of state to help us take care of our community. Right now it's paused, but it is certainly something that we're going to expand in the future. That's a great question.
It's very clear that nurse, nurse shortage, behavioral health care shortage. Is it extended to doctors, to other?
Yeah, we're seeing that as well. And Dr. Osborn right now is going through the process of a new class. And so as we plan for the future, like stated, even if we were to, you know, fill every single position, we'd still be short. That was already happening pre-pandemic and it's just exacerbated even more now. And we're seeing physicians now starting to retire earlier. You know, physicians usually, they, they love what they do. So you don't see early retirements in doctors very often. And we're starting to see that, you know, here and there whispers of things like that. So.
I had a question about that earlier. When you send me, you do exit interviews where folks are doing, are retiring early. Do you literally ask the question, what would it take to keep you?
We do. We invest in retention. Part of that retention is how do we create a culture? How do we maintain that culture? And then how do we ensure that if that individual's leaving because of things that are perhaps out of our control? Can we have the opportunity to change that? A lot of times it's just burnout, you know? I got a message this afternoon from one of our ED folks stating, you know, like, we need a sign somewhere that says, you know, rude behavior is not accepted. But that's what they're facing now. And, and there is nothing that I can do, right? For that specific issue, when an individual comes in very agitated and tries to, you know, verbally abuse or physically abuse our staff in the moment. We then, how do we respond to that, right? What are the tactics that we can put in place, additional security, more training, de-escalation, you know, things like that. But that will continue to be, and we think that part of it is, you know, to, to Dr. Osborn's point, the pandemic has really exacerbated that isolation, some of those issues that are already there. Yeah, it's, it's very tough, but we do do a lot of extrudings.
So would you say that the shortage is more acute in Oregon or is it pretty much nationwide?
So I came from LA and the issues that we're seeing here in terms of labor shortages, we were seeing them there, you know? LA County is huge, right? It's like five, ten million people, whatever it is. They had a lot of labor shortages. It's the same here and it's nationwide. It's this twenty percent is, it's a mirror of what's happening across the country. Especially, and we were already short in, in, in labor, you know, pre-pandemic. So this, this didn't make it easy.
Do you think it's our pandemic, like, things have happened, I don't know. Give you an example, critical period on, um, he had a family, he was killing the family member because it wasn't good. He said, maybe this guy has saved his life. You know, you put your life on the line to help these people spit on and yell at. But that wears you down.
Yeah.
And I'm saying we're alone in this cluster of teachers, I think, across the board. I, I hope we bring back stability, just to say. It would be nice. I mean, I think we're seeing a breakdown, societal breakdown just across the board. I'm, this is probably a dumb question, but is part of the issue with getting enough people in fashion, the fact that it costs so much to get those degrees, to get to that point?
Well, if it's an entry level position, like for example, a patient care tech or perhaps even a radio, you know, radiology technician. There's two issues. One, access to the school, right? So we don't have enough instructors to do that. And then there's not enough schools, some schools closed during the pandemic. And then, of course, then the onboarding piece, right? So it takes a while to onboard somebody. The cost, I think the cost is, is a barrier to an extent. But there are programs, you know, for example, we have tuition assistance that we can help with, to offset some of that. And then, of course, during the pandemic, because everybody closed down, even the clinicals, when people go and sort of practice, you know, do clinical rounding as part of their training, that was closed off. So we're getting nurses that didn't have that opportunity, that we have to train them on the base. Some of these nurses have never interacted with a real patient because they couldn't during the pandemic. So we have that. Of course, the physician piece, that's a very expensive piece.
Yeah, so this, three years ago, it was reconciliation. Heard there were five, six, five, five were hospital administrators, a daycare instructor. So it's, it's best, we're seeing huge expansion in this. People racking up huge debt, but they're not just lost, right? So what are they going to? And I think that's the next revolution. I'm about to, and I'm, I'm going to develop that training. It's not just, it's everybody on the team. And for example, after COVID hit, I was talking to Mike Now, I had a nurse, like, people are paging their docs, they're sometimes getting their names wrong and you just look, we got fifteen nurses. That follows one, my sister's a nurse in Virginia, it's the same thing, stressed out, like, it's all, or they're all there.
And you may not know the answer to this question. Is this an American thing?
I think so. My wife's German. Her mom's advice is don't get sick. It was probably wise, I won't say it. They will say over there, specialists compete about the same as right here. You're everything, especially for. So I think.
As country. I also understand that most of the education for doctors in Europe at least are, it's required, yeah.
And unique, we have a third-party pair system here, which is very different than many other countries. That's the other, you know?
To me, that's the elephant in the room.
Right, right.
And it's, and it's something that Oregon's considering.
Yeah, it'll be the first in the nation. Very interesting experiment to be part of, to be very honest with you. So we'll see how that goes. Interesting to hear.
You know, Washington State, they were way ahead of, they should start, shut off, all services, kind of, so that you know.
So as you can see, service is in our DNA. We could talk about healthcare until the cows come home. But any other questions? Not thank you very much for the opportunity to come present to you and for your attention and your engagement, your questions. We are very happy, obviously, to be in this community and be part of this.
And thank you whoever sent the article that we got in our packet. That was, it was very interesting to me that, I mean, I've been working with people, physicians for social responsibility for years, fighting various climate fights. But it's very heartening to me that it sounds like the medical profession writ large is to the point where they're like, okay, this is our life. We do need. And I think hopefully that will help move the needle with, with thought processes, with policy makers. Because it's still slogging through mud to make the changes we need to make. The longer we take, the faster we need to go to get stuff done. So. Yeah, I'd be, if that's a passion of yours, there may be moments that I might reach out to say, hey, could you please come testify and say?
We're, we're, service is our DNA, Mayor, and we're more than happy in your new role that you, that you're going to fill to support. You know, Providence wants to be a voice and we also want to be a change agent. So appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
This, outstanding, please.
It'll look a change too.
What's a little bit of a bummer that Robert had to give you for this next part. You, I think it's an important conversation. When I first got on council, there was an attitude, it was like we were in an island. We didn't, none of the crescent council was engaging with any of the, with Metro, with Clackamas County in any way. We didn't, we didn't go to those meetings, even though we have guaranteed seat, seat four. And serious opportunities to be in at those other seats, there was nobody doing it and they kept being prepared. So we flipped the majority. It's super important to, for this council to be engaged at those levels. For a lot of reasons. One, and really, to my mind, obvious one is if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. That's, it sounds very trite, but it's also very true. A lot of the funding that we've gotten for various projects that we've done have been because either I or Kathy have been in the room in the conversations. Moving the direction of the policy concepts so that what the work that we're trying to do. Right? So it's like pre-checking for that work. The, we're getting five hundred units of portable housing because I put hundreds of hours into the Metro bonds, low-income housing bond measure. And that's coming back to pay off, right? We're going to get a lot of portable housing that would not, there was no other way to get that money. So this is all my way of saying, I really strongly encourage the next council to think hard about who's going to be out in the broader community, working in those, sitting at those tables. So there's a whole plethora of things that happen. Metro kind of is the center of that. Portland is, I'm sure you are going to say all this stuff because I don't know what people don't, you know? Portland is unique. We are the only metro region in the country that has an elected body that governs the entire metro region. When I visited Chicago with the mayor's climate, sorry, or whatever it was called. People in Chicago were jealous. They were jealous about the coordination that we have because we have Metro. There's a lot of city folks that bitch about Metro and blame Metro for all these things, but they're wrong. I mean, yes, Metro makes mistakes. But, but what we have is, it's so much better than the most metro regions have. So there are two major committees at Metro, J-PAC and M-PAC. One deals with land use, one deals with transportation. To be on either of those committees, you have to be, first of all, a member of C4, Clackamas County Coordinated Committee. And then you have to convince the other cities in the Clackamas County Coordinated Committee to nominate you or to vote for you to be sitting at those tables. Sitting at either one of those tables gives you the opportunity to then be appointed to low-income task force, the, the bond measure group, the, thinking about how we do or don't expand our urban growth. Those are really major decisions that occur. And those, that's the group of people out of which they pull people for them. So I strongly recommend that somebody who's got the bandwidth be the C4 appointee from, from Milwaukee. And that they go to all the meetings. C4 is once a month in the evening. And then there's a C4 Metro, which is just the cities of Metro. C4 is all the cities in Clackamas County, plus the hamlets, plus the.
CPOs.
CPOs, plus some special districts, blah, blah, blah. It's a big table. It's a much more conservative table. But one of the beauties of being there is that we've, we've been able to move the needle on how Clackamas County is engaging and how votes come out of C4 towards Metro. So because I've not been shy at those tables, wasting my opinion about things like climate that are controversial and helping educate people who their response is to be opposed to things like that. We've really moved the needle down there. And, and being at C4 Metro Subcommittee, which is a morning meeting, early morning, is even more powerful because that's a much stronger people. It's just cities in the Portland metro region. And that's really truly the group that decides who's going to sit on, uh, M-PAC and J-PAC.
And you and Kathy both really, I mean, I know that last year you've done less of it, but overall, you were both kind of going.
Yeah, I, I've attended, even after I, I handed that stuff off to Kathy, I still tried to attend as many of those as I could.
I do think counting.
I've been. It's helpful, but I have to tell you that a lot of the conversations and a lot of things that are happening, happen serially, right? So if you're switching off, you're not following the, the through line of what's happening. And it's, that's pretty important. When I was the, the main appointee and world was, uh, my alternate, I might have missed one meeting of each of those. But I got, I managed to get on M-PAC really early, like within six months of, of being on C4. And then because I was outspoken at M-PAC, I became the chair of M-PAC half a year and a half later. And that has, you just, that regional visibility has really helped with what we can do and really moves me. So I'm just trying to stress how important those kinds of things are. We have other things, you know, we've got the, the committee with WASS, dealing with sewers. We have, you know, and that's, that continues to be important. Clackamas County, to my knowledge, still hasn't changed the way we're calculating SDCs. Right about that, but I've spent a lot. Yeah, so I mean, Angel has been, she started working on that three years ago. Got to the point where what they were talking about was changing SDCs and they still haven't actually done it. It's going to require somebody being in the room, founding the table and getting them off the dime. That's what it takes. I mean, it's, it feels embarrassing, I guess. I'm, I'm trying to think of the word. There's a reticence for people to speak up, to really say, no, call a spade a spade and really talk about what's happening. And I, I had some really good early mentors. Pete Truax, the, the retiring mayor of Forest Grove. And Tim Now, the mayor of Wilsonville. Were both very smart, very outspoken individuals. And it was clear to me how much they could, just that voice, one voice. So I kind of took my cues from them and it's, it's been very, a very positive experience. And it creates all kinds of opportunities for the city itself and for the city to be a leader in the region. So that's that sort of area. The Metro Mayor's Consortium, there's only one person that can go to that. Can't send an alternate, we can't do anything else, to be fair. That can go. Instead, support, but they can't vote, they can't really speak unless they're asked something. Um. And the Metro Mayor's Consortium, when I first. Started going, wasn't called that. I can't, I was trying to remember the other day what it's called. Uh, but basically it was a once a month lunch of all the mayors in the metro region to sit around and bitch about Metro. That's what we did. Seriously, they didn't actively do. And I went to three of those meetings and I said, you guys, seriously, this is, this is what we do. I drive to Tiger. Once a month, or twelve months a month, that I just have a mediocre sandwich and bitch about Metro. Y'all are very cool, but I, there's better thing to be doing with my time. I said. Look at the power that's sitting in this room, look at the brainpower sitting in this room. Imagine the difference we could be making. Salem, as well as at Metro, if we were coordinated and organized, really. Making decisions about what we want policy to be rather than reacting to things that Metro is doing. Doing to us. This was the attitude, right? And we changed. We became a consortium. We hired Thorn Rotten to be a lobbyist. We have an executive team now and that's. Through, I mean, it's been a revel, uh, evolution, but each member of the executive committee is the chair of subcommittees that are subject matter. That's right. So I've been the chair of energy and environment since, since the consortium formed because. I was on the executive committee initially, have been stayed on it. And because of that, I've been able to steer. The MMC's push in Salem for climate. Positive forward things. And we've done a bunch of other things. We, we actually, Bill came from us around. Um. Airway training for police. That was becoming, I think people were dying because we didn't understand the, you know, physiology of how a human airway works. And I felt mayor, the mayor of Tiger, was a paramedic, suggested that bill and we, we got that passed. So that's a very powerful, people, I suspect that will remain powerful. Um, it takes a lot of time and education. It's during session, the executive committee is meeting once a week. To go through what's happening down there and those decisions that we need to make. And the executive committee is leading those subcommittee things before sessions, determining what is going to be our policy criteria.
How much is there? Agreement consent?
When I, when we first formed it. Um, oh, and by the way, we make decisions on a seventy percent authority. So we, we do not, uh. We do not engage on an issue of plus seventy percent. So the first two times I tried to cause the MMC to support climate bill. We had a majority, but we didn't have seventy percent. Um, and. Ever since then. Seven percent majority, so. Uh, there's been a shift to the more. Liberal end of the spectrum within the mayors. And some of them, there's a handful of mayors that are kind of middle of the road. Their political attitudes are making me try to get there if I understand the issue of. Um, I don't, I don't foresee that changing, really. I think the trend is that the Portland metro region is becoming. More progressive generally. Folks that oppose to that are moving out of the metro region. So there's lots of opportunities. The more you're engaged, the more opportunities you will have. To sit on other committees to weigh in and work on issues. I, I just cannot recommend strongly that, that you all do that. Whatever, whatever degree you can. I know it's hugely time consuming. Um, but it's, it's really valuable. So I can't tell you what currently is happening and, well, I can tell you a little bit. So, um. The IVR is under discussion at J-PAC pretty regularly, the. Interstate bridge. Uh, projects, uh, tolling. And the expansion of two oh five will remain a hot topic for C four.
Has Clackamas taken a position?
On what?
On toll.
Oh, yes. Exceedingly anti, exceedingly anti, don't you dare toll us, but it's, you know, widen those freeways. Just don't make us pay for it.
And is the position, I mean, and some of the stuff I've read is, um. Not, I mean, some people are not anti tolling, they're anti. Clackamas going first, that I feel like it should all happen.
That's a tactic more than it is, I believe. Um, that's the tactic that, that Sav, Savas is brilliant at. At politically dragging everyone's feet. Taking it down the road enough times that it dies. And he is, he's sitting on J-PAC. And he's, uh, he's on the R one act. He's very engaged. In, uh, transportation.
Some people don't know the act.
Area submission for transportation. Uh, so I just came off of that, at the last meeting a couple of days ago. So there will be an opening, which isn't necessarily a Milwaukee open, but I think if. Mayor of Milwaukee or one of the counselors in Milwaukee wanted to be on it, they could be.
And C four determines that?
Uh, yeah, I think it is C four that. Yeah, C four, C four metro, you know, C four. The line that Kathy and I have been holding on the whole tolling thing is that. We believe that true, um, congestion pricing. Which doesn't just toll a freeway, which is going to push traffic off of the freeway. But tolls time of day, port, you know, portal pricing. Time of day area, you enter it, pay the toll. But the key to that, probably we have an org. Which I'm going to work on, but probably have is that. Where that's working well in the world. The money that it raised from those tolls not only builds those highway projects, it also builds transit. Bike pad infrastructure and it reduces congestion through that method, methodology. We can only do that up to a certain point in the state because we have to, can't, we can't pay for transit operations. And it can't pay for.
Under state law or something?
Under our constitution.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And it can't pay for, um. Even. Bike pad projects or transit projects if they are not in the right of way. If they're in the right of way, then they can pay for the infrastructure. So. It's, it's something that needs to be worked on, but I can tell you. Tolling is going to be a nonstarter. I mean, again, ODOT is moving ahead. But Clackamas is pushing back hard and I think a lot of the rest of the region is, Washington County, a lot of the same voices, right? So it's, it's going to be a fight. There need to be adults in the room that could say, look. First of all, the legislature told us when they did twenty seventeen, that this is how we were going to have to pay for some of these projects. Secondly, if we don't toll, how would you like us to pay? Just the IVR alone was regressed today and I guarantee you it will be more than this, but yesterday we learned that it's likely to be seven point five billion dollars. We're getting quite a couple out of, out of the feds and Washington has committed a billion. It's going to be an interesting conversation. Salem about that. So, and, and there's what, three other major highway projects. Got Rose Porter is still heading. Widening of two oh five between, uh, bridge and. Start with an house. Anyway. Just before you hit high five.
Stafford.
Stafford. Uh, and all of those added up and the interest on those loans to build those things were talking sixteen point dollars. That's going to suck all the oxygen in the room away from doing anything around safety. You know, in, in the neighborhoods in the, you know, eighty seconds. Or glat lines. All, all the places that, how, all the places that there's a lot of crashes. Um, need a lot of work, need money. We invest in those highway projects, there's going to be no. At all. So that needs to be, continue to be a voice that comes from the cities, to need a hammer or. Both safety money and addressing climate. We're still not investing in our transportation systems as if we truly believe that, that climate change is happening. And Kathy and I were one of the, you know, we were the voices. We were, we're certainly the major voices coming out of Clackamas County and. In the minority of voices at large. So I would encourage whoever ends up at those tables to continue to be that voice. And I'm happy to be a resource whenever I can. You all have my cell phone number. Sorry, this is a call that I got three weeks ago. It's still on my finger. Trying to think what else. Regionally. But, you know, one of the many benefits that we get out of, of the MMC is that report that I, I always forward. Which is one of the most well. Research and condensed. Uh, looks at what's happening in politics statewide. And every month we get that. Super useful. So. I can't stress. Enough that we need to stay in the agency. Keep engaging. And there will be three open spaces on the executive. So, yeah, so.
Three.
Yeah, we have a certain leader.
Yeah, her, remember that place?
Chair, she will be the chair. That's some crazy thing. She's good. I would, I would count her better, more climate forward mayors of the region. Still all's good. We're losing Jason out Tiger. It's really good. Lot of new mayors.
Well, thank you for doing this. The one thing that Kathy served on in addition to this that I hope to hear about is the. There's sort of an ad hoc committee in Clackamas County working on childcare access. Do you know what I mean?
Um, yeah, Kathy will be able to lay in on that and Karen, she was involved in that too.
Yeah, I see Karen's from the transition team.
Yeah, very busy lady. Uh, but that's again, another big deal, I. Really need, but it's everything, you know, behavioral health, nurses, teachers. Childcare, all of these really critical jobs are one, one thing. Big issue. Any questions you can think of that, I'm disappearing, you'll all be able to help.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have questions. I'm sure we'll have questions, but that will get over me.
J-PAC is an early warning.
And then I was just seeing the, um, J-PAC meetings. I mean, so far Metro's still doing everything, didn't have a.
Virtually, yes.
So I've watched a few, you know, recorded or whatever, but, um, there ones all of us could. Try to watch, um.
Yes.
Between now and our retreat, we can talk about our staff these things.
That would be a good idea. And again, if, if getting into J-PAC is hard, it's a very desirable. Position because there's a lot of money. And it is, it's the money committee. So it's very desirable to be on a J-PAC. They, there will be a, a fight for that. I know Joe will go after it. He tried before he got Kathy.
Well, the other few points that. You know, that you've made to be is that, um, when you're at that table and you see sort of the bigger picture of what's coming, that you kind of. Force trade it, like, okay, this year we'll support the Westland Highway forty three with the underscript, but next year you'll support. You'll grow greenway.
Right.
Sort of do some.
Right. That worked out really well because the year that we were, that the Monroe Greenway was the top. The top project, top, top ranked project in Clackamas. All we were asking for was engineering. And so when I gave that away. Appearing very magnanimous. To Westland, talked about how important forty three was and that, that whole, that whole side of the river has really weak bike infrastructure, all those things. That put us in position. When we came back, what we were actually going after was built, which was nearly ten times as much. So it was, I mean, that's the opportunity that you have to sort of think three chess moves ahead. And, and then do the work. With, with all of the rest of the committee members and. And, and, and do try and help. I mean. Do you think about the big picture? I, I've been attending J-PAC meetings. I, I, um. Didn't sit at that table much, but, uh, I've been attending those meetings for. Eight years now, nine years. And just watching the process of learning the players and learning. Where the positive you're coming for and how they're structured. Allows you then, at the moment at C four, to start to. Position our projects at the right time, in the right way to get funded. Uh, and, and to be able to really help with the bigger picture. Uh. You all know that bike pad's been a big push of mine. Metro wide. At the level we are currently investing in bike and pedestrian. It will be two hundred years before we build out the bike and pedestrian plan. And that's a billion and change. It's like one point two billion. For all of those projects region wide, whereas. The transit plan was thirty five billion dollars and we were going to be built out in. Twenty years and the roadway plan was fifty billion dollars and we're going to be built out in. Sixty years or something. And being at a table to argue, look, we could really shift. A lot of things if we build out, you can't ride your bike, if you can't ride your bike from point A to point B. It doesn't do us any good to do these little one off pieces. But being that voice, that's, that's, you know, the data has shown us, polling has shown us that. Investing in bike and pedestrian, if you have a really robust system that people get from point A to point B safely, comfortably on a bicycle. We can reduce congestion just in that somewhere between ten and twenty percent. Ten and twenty percent. You cannot build that much freeway space. But we keep ignoring that because the sort of status quo standard thinking is that normal transportation is a car. And if you can't get a car from point A to point B faster, you know, two minutes faster by widening some freeway section, then you're failing. Whereas we, we pull ten to twenty percent of those cars off of that freeway because they're on their bikes. Whereas we could, we pull ten to twenty percent of those cars off of that freeway because they're on their bikes. There's a lot I could rant about. Sure you all would like to go. So, thank you. Good session. Yeah, one more meeting. What's on, what, what's on the schedule for that meeting?
So there's no more session next week. It's just the regular segment. And then, uh, we'll do a brief goodbye. Chambers for people who wanna stop by and then we've actually noticed that people will be going to the store afterwards. Uh, we have three former councilmembers who will be joining us. So, uh, Angel Popner will be here. We didn't get a chance to celebrate her departure and congratulate her. So we will be doing that next Tuesday and then we'll send that, uh, Shane Avon will be in the event as Gold Will number. So, um, Julie, it's your chance for everybody to get together for a little celebration and then, uh, we noticed we didn't know. So you all are welcome to take yours for our wedding. Stat also know that this is a place today.
Is there nothing we have to vote on this week?
Uh, we have some, it's a very, very short agenda. I think I, I.
Yes, the second vote on looking over the thousand.
Um, yeah, we appointed to the, the planning commission, the ultimate. So I mean, it's, it's mostly just, uh, the.
Building the housekeeping.
Yeah. Then a chance for some speeches. Okay.
Cool. Thanks, everybody.